He looks just like Brett.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, the York County School Board for August the 26th, 2019. And as a note, Ms. Haywood is unable to attend this evening. But in just seven days, we'll begin our new school year, and I hope everybody's enjoyed a great summer and is ready for a productive new year that we have coming. So we'll begin our meeting with asking our pledge leader, Elizabeth Marukovic, Marukovic, I'm sorry, a fifth grader at Coventry Elementary School to step forward, and I'm going to read a few things about her. So Elizabeth will begin her fifth grade year at Coventry this fall and is highly regarded by Coventry teachers and staff. When asked to submit names of students who would represent Coventry well as the pledge leader, one staff member simply said, "The first student that came to my mind was Elizabeth Marukovic." Elizabeth's school counselor describes her as a great example of a kind and caring cougar and a wonderful friend to her classmates. Fifth grade students are the student leaders at Coventry, and Elizabeth will set an excellent example for the younger students to follow. Elizabeth is active in Coventry's Battle of the Books team and enjoys drawing in her free time. She participates in Girl Scouts, and when serving as part of her Troops Color Guard, has experience in leading the Pledge of Allegiance at PTA meetings. So we're excited to be honored to have Elizabeth represent Coventry this evening. So please stand as she joins, leads us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And next, we're going to move into some recognition and awards. And as a reminder, we'll take some photos during the break of the award recipients and everybody that's been introduced in the beginning of the meeting tonight. So this is introduction to new staff. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you introduce our new staff members that are with us tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. So we have 18 new staff members on our leadership team, and I'm proud to introduce them this evening and share a few comments about each of them. So staff members, when I say your name, if you'll please stand and remain standing. So first, we have Mr. Brian Fries. Brian, if you'll please stand. So Brian is the new principal at Coventry Elementary School. Mr. Fries began his teaching career at Hilton Elementary in Newport News, where he was named Teacher of the Year in 2013. He served three years as the Assistant Principal of Dozier Middle School before moving to his next assignment as Assistant Principal at Hines Middle School. Next, we have Ms. Tremaine Hopkins. She is the new principal at Waller Mill, Waller Mill Elementary School, easy for me to say. Ms. Hopkins has served as an Assistant Principal at TAB Middle School since 2016. Prior to joining the York County School Division, she worked in Williamsburg-James City County Schools as a special education teacher and school improvement specialist. Next, we have Ms. Tiana Anthony. She is our principal at Grafton Middle School. Ms. Anthony joined the York County School Division in 2015 as the York High School Assistant Principal. After serving at York High School for three years, she transitioned to her present role as Principal of Grafton Middle School, and that was this past January of 2019. Next, we have Ms. Caitlin Spruill from Grafton Bethel Elementary School. She's not from, well, she is from there, but she's the new Assistant Principal there. Ms. Spruill previously served as the Assessment, Compliance, and Intervention Coordinator and was a special education teacher with the division. Next, we have Ms. Mindy Adams. Ms. Adams has been with the division since 2007. She's taught first and second grade at Mount Vernon Elementary School, participated in summer academies, and most recently, served as the Assessment and Compliance Coordinator at York High School. And the last person in the front row is Mr. Anthony Friedman, new Assistant Principal at TAB Elementary School. Mr. Friedman is coming to us from Prince William County Schools, where he has served as a special ed teacher, lead mentor, and member of the school's leadership team. If you could welcome the first, the first row. All right. In our second row, we have Ms. Krista Brownlee. If she'll please stand. She's a new Assistant Principal at Grafton Middle School. Ms. Brownlee comes to us from Hampton City Schools, where she has served as a literacy support specialist since 2016. Ms. Brownlee has five years of teaching experience as a fifth grade teacher at John Tyler Elementary School, where she was named Teacher of the Year in 2016. Next, we have Mr. Stephen Gavin, new Assistant Principal at Grafton Middle School. Mr. Gavin has been an Assistant Principal with Hampton City School since 2012, at both Jones Magnet Middle School and Phoebus High School. He has more than 25 years' experience in education in both math and physical education. Next, we have Ms. Heather Stark. I'll give her a moment to stand. Ms. Heather Stark, new Assistant Principal at Queens Lake Middle School. Ms. Stark joined YCSD as a Queens Lake Middle School teacher in 2005, before moving to Grafton Middle as a reading specialist. She has also served as a department chair, instructional trainer, and member of the Queens Lake Middle School leadership team. Next, we have Ms. Amore Michael, new Assistant Principal at TAB Middle School. Ms. Michael comes to us from Williamsburg-James City Schools and has 18 years of experience in education. She began her career as a special education teacher and then served as an Assistant Principal at War Hill High School. Next, we have Mr. Lucas Witham, new Assistant Principal at TAB Middle School. Mr. Witham previously served as YCSD, in YCSD, as a science teacher, varsity athletic coach, and student support coach at York High School. He also served on the York High School PBIS school leadership team. And our last person in that row is Ms. Holly Sheffield. She's an Assistant Principal at York High School as well. She started this past spring, 2019. Prior to joining YCSD, Ms. Sheffield served at WJCC Schools as an instructional specialist, supporting students with disabilities. She also has nine years' experience as an Assistant Principal at both a high school and middle school level. So let's give that row a big round of applause. All right. Our last row of new leaders in the school division, Ms. Kristen Wood, if she'll please stand. She is our Coordinator of Online Learning. Ms. Wood joined the division as a science teacher in 2008 and has served as the Online Learning Specialist, working alongside Reggie Fox for the last three years. Next up is Dr. Jim Carroll, Chief Operations Officer. Dr. Carroll joined the York County School Division in 2014 as Chief Human Resources Officer. He came to us from Cabarrus County Schools in North Carolina and has spent nearly 30 years in education field with more than 20 years' experience in educational leadership. And he has a big fan here tonight. Next, we have Dr. Tony Vladu, Chief, new Chief Human Resource Officer. Sorry, easy for me to say. Dr. Vladu has served as our Director of Secondary Instruction since 2015. After serving seven years in the Army, Dr. Vladu is now entering his 20th year in education with 11 of those at the administrative rank. Next, we have Ms. Angela Siders, Director of Secondary Instruction. Ms. Siders has over 25 years of experience in education, while she has most recently served as the Associate Director of School Administration and Compliance. She also has 16 years' experience as a secondary level principal, eight of those most recently at TAB High School. Next, we have Dr. Amanda Corbin-Staten, New Associate Director in Human Resources. Dr. Corbin-Staten was previously part of the York County Team as an Assistant Principal at both McGruder Elementary School and TAB Middle School. She has spent the last 11 years with Newport News Public Schools, first as a principal at the elementary and middle school levels, and most recently, in the role of Secondary Employment Coordinator. And last but not least, Dr. Doug Hartley, Associate Director of School Administration and Compliance. Dr. Hartley is a veteran school administrator who's been with YCSD since 1991, most recently as an Assistant Principal at TAB Middle School. Having served in all four zones of the division, his wealth of experience will be an asset in supporting all school administrators. Please join me in welcoming all of these new leaders to YCSD.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing about the contributions and insight that these new leaders will bring to the division. So thank you and congratulations to each one of you. Now, we're going to move into the York Foundation for Public Education presentation, and I'll ask Ms. Christina Head, YFPE, YFPE member, to come forward. She'll present a gift on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education to the pledge leader, Elizabeth Marukovic, if she could come forward. And you're being presented a gift card from Walmart, Walmart on behalf of a foundation supporter. So thank you for coming tonight. And our next presentation is the Virginia Index of Performance, the VIP Board of Education Awards. And Dr. Shandor, I'll let you share some information about these awards.
Actually, I'm going to bring Dr. Guy to the podium, and she's going to share that information.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. The Virginia Index of Performance, or VIP program, recognizes schools and divisions that exceed state and federal accountability standards and achieve excellence goals established by the Governor and the Board of Education. 2019 VIP awards are based on data from the FY '17 and FY ' '18 school year. I'm pleased to share that the York County School Division and 10 of 19 YCSD schools earned VIP awards in 2019. This year, one YCSD school earned the Board of Education Excellence Award. This award is given to schools that are fully accredited and have made significant progress towards established educational goals. Schools must also earn 80 VIP points in each content area. Please join me in recognizing Mount Vernon Elementary School as a Board of Education Excellence, Excellence Award recipient. Here tonight is Principal Kristen Bollum and Assistant Principal Todd Miller. Congratulations. The division and nine YCSD schools earned the Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This award has similar requirements to the Education Excellence Award. However, schools must earn 75 VIP points in each content area. Please join me in recognizing the following distinguished achievement award winners at the elementary level. From Coventry Elementary, Principal Brian Fries and Assistant Principal Melissa Horton. From Dare Elementary, Principal Dr. Susan Hutton and Assistant Principal Lisa Circe. From Grafton Bethel Elementary, Principal Lisa Ruffier and Assistant Principal Caitlin Spruill. From TAB Elementary, Principal Mary Lugo and Assistant Principal Anthony Friedman. Congratulations to all of our elementary schools on a job well done. Thank you. And now, I'd like to recognize our distinguished achievement award recipients at the secondary level. From Grafton Middle, Principal Tiana Anthony and Assistant Principals Krista Brownlee and Stephen Gavin, and Assessment and Compliance Coordinator Julie Martin. From TAB Middle, Principal Heather Young and Assistant Principal Amore Michael and Lucas Witham. From Grafton High, Principal Whitney Cataldo and Assistant Principals Dr. Abby Martin and George Page. From TAB High, Principal Paul Rice. From York High, Principal Dr. Shannon Butler and Assistant Principals Holly Sheffield and Erin McQuillan. Like you like each other. Congratulations. In addition to the VIP, Education Excellence, and Distinguished Achievement Awards, three YCSD schools earned additional recognition. Two schools earned the 2019 Board of Education Continuous Improvement Award. Please join me in congratulating Queens Lake Middle School, Principal Jennifer Goodwin and Assistant Principal Heather Stark. And Bruton High School, Principal Arletha Dockery, and Assistant Principals Ben Jones and Wendy Wyatt. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, one school earned the 2019 Highest Achievement Exemplar School Award. To earn this award, a school must be fully accredited and have no more than a 5% or 10% gap between subgroup performance and all students in both English and mathematics. Please join me in recognizing Mount Vernon Elementary School, Principal Kristen Bollum and Assistant Principal Todd Miller. Again, I want to say congratulations. All of these achievements are the result of the collective efforts of all of our hard-working students, dedicated teachers, and administrators, and supportive York County families. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Dr. Guy, for that presentation. Appreciate that. So next, we have our Aspiring Leaders Recognition. Dr. Shandor, will you provide details and introductions of these awards?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Tonight, we're excited to recognize 11 staff members who recently completed the First York County Aspiring Leaders Program. This program was developed to help support Goal Three of the Strategic Plan, which aims to recruit, support, and retain high-quality leaders. I appreciate the leadership and dedication of Ms. Candy Skinner, Director of Elementary Instruction, and Ms. Christina Head, Associate Director of CAFW of Academic Services. I ask that they please come forward to the podium to share information about the program and present the certificates to the participants.
Good evening, Chairman Richardson and members of the board. The Aspiring Leaders Program offers professional development and mentoring support through hands-on learning experiences led by division leadership staff. As part of this program, this group met monthly to study the five principles and practices found in the Leadership Challenge Framework. Guest presenters shared how they applied these five practices of leadership in their role within the school division. Some of those presenters included Dr. Erin Butler, Dr. Shannon Butler, Paul Rice, Dr. David Rice, Cheryl Parr, and Greg Dolak. Additionally, each participant selected a personal best project that they planned and implemented during the school year, where they showed what they learned through the Aspiring Leaders Program. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Christina Head, who will call the participants to the stage for recognition.
Yes, and first, we have our first participant, Lisa Beasley. Katie Gaylord. Dr. Doug Hartley. Tremaine Hopkins. Tammy Krasierik. Dr. Abby Martin. George Page. Lisa Circe. Matt Taman. Chrissy Wagner. And last but not least, Candace Welch. Please join us for another round of applause for these participants.
Well, thank you very much. So the board will take a short recess while the, so the members of the board can meet some of the award recipients and some of the new, new staff members. So we'll take a short recess. Well, good evening. We're going to reconvene this meeting, and we're going to start with unfinished business, which I see we have none. And we're going to move on to our presentations, our Capital Projects Report. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Sheehardt, Associate Director for Capital Plans, he'll come up to the podium. He's going to present this month's Capital Projects Report. Mr. Sheehardt?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of August. The first project we talk about is TAB Elementary School renovations that took place there. We finished it up again. This was a two-year project. We finished it up this year. We completed the fire sprinklers installation there at that school, painted the kitchen and cafeteria, and also, we replaced many items throughout the school. We did classroom casework and sinks and classroom cabinet doors, classroom exterior windows, the classroom doors, and then the gym windows and the floor, and the cafeteria ceiling windows and floors, so windows and doors. So it was very, very busy there. You know, last year was busy, and this year was busy as well, but it looks great. You can see here, this is a picture here. A lot of these pictures were taking place during the construction period. You can see here the brand-new roof on the building. It looks fantastic, and the men are changing out the windows in the classrooms in this photo. The next picture here is the casework that's in the classrooms. We did upper and lower cabinets. They did some cubbies in the classrooms and also replaced some cabinet doors, added some bookcases and some other items in the classrooms. This is a picture of the new floor in TAB Elementary School. You can see the new, beautiful new gym floor with the logo in the center there. It's, looks great in there. There's a new crack, new wall pads and the painting and new windows and everything in this gymnasium. So it looks great in there. Next project is Grafton Middle and High School, the HVAC replacement and main offices reorientation. That was a very, very busy place this summer. We, they did the middle school and high school security vestibules. They replaced the heating and air conditioning, boilers, cooling tires, heat pumps, and everything in the building. They changed out the main electric switchboard, and all, and all the classroom lighting was changed over to LEDs. The high school, we focused this year on the high school and the middle school, the high school in the center of the building. Next summer, we focus on the, on the middle school. So this is the phasing. I showed this to you last school year. So we focused on the blue area this summer. We have not installed the permanent generators, which is the upper, upper right-hand little blue square there. That's where the, the permanent generators go. So we have a temporary generator to, to start school until those generators arrive. Here's a picture of the new entrance to the high school. You can see this wall on the left-hand side here. That was a cinder block wall, a concrete block wall, and it was painted red. And you can see, we took that all out, and we put new windows in there. This door goes right into the main office area, so they can look straight out into the main entrance of the school. This is, the doors you're looking at here are the security doors. I'm, when I took this picture, I was standing just inside the front doors of the building. You can see the arched area, arched roof here, that we get to add some, add some character to that entrance. This is the high, the middle school entrance. You can see it's a little bit different here. There's an air conditioning unit above the ceiling there. We couldn't take out this year. That takes place next year. But you see also here, we took out, took out that kind of concrete block wall and put in this glass wall here in the middle school. The first door you come into, the, on the left-hand side there, is the attendance office. The high school side, the attendance office is in back of the school. At the middle school side, the attendance office is in front. And then you, the right-hand door there is the main office door. So they have both offices that are next to each other. And again, these are the security doors that you see here in the picture. Next school is Coventry Elementary School, security vestibule there. We did expand the canopy there to get the new security vestibule installed, created that vestibule, and we renovated the front offices. So this is what the front of the school looks like. It looks much more prominent on the front of the building. You can see where the front doors are at now, rather than being hid back inside the building. This is another picture inside the school. Again, some of these pictures were taken during the construction. So you can see here, the floor hasn't been waxed yet or anything, but you can see what the inside of the, inside of the offices look like there. The wall on the right-hand side there, it used to be a cinder block wall. And again, we took it out and put a glass wall, so that the secretaries can monitor traffic in and out of the building. Metal roof replacement. The contractor there has been doing great progress there. He's almost finished with the front roof panels on the front of the building. They've completed the roof panels on all three additions, and their substantial completion is November, November 14th, but they are trying to beat that, and I think they will at the pace they're setting right now. The old pale metal roof, I don't know if you remember it. It was washed out, blue, faded blue roof on the front of the school, but this is what it looks like now. So it looks almost like a brand-new school. Dare Elementary School, gym floor and breezeway. We've, we've, over the summer, we repainted the gym walls. We removed the plastic floor tiles and installed a wood floor in there, which the county helped fund that floor, since they use the gym for skate rally and roll. And they also painted a logo on the floor, and they've ordered, we've ordered new wall pads. They have not arrived yet, but this is what the new floor looks like in that gym. It's fantastic. The breezeway enclosure at Dare, we've, we've demolished, the contractors have demolished the entire existing breezeway. They've restored, installed underground plumbing, and they've poured the concrete foundations. Their final completion is not until January 31st, but they believe that they're going to beat that date as well. Dare Elementary, we also replaced, or did some roof repairs there. That roofing is going fantastic as well. They've completed all the repairs and coating of the main, main building there, and they're 85% complete with the repairs and coating of the extended center roof. They do plan to beat their substantial completion date there. They plan to be done this Friday. So they're, they're going to be off the school before school starts. So we've had some fantastic contractors this summer. Mount Vernon Elementary School, security vestibule, gym floor, and breezeway. The security vestibule, again, we expanded the canopy, created a vestibule there, and we had to reorient the, renovate the main offices to get better traffic flow there and increase security. And so this is what the new front of Mount Vernon looks like. Instead of, again, so instead of the doors being, the front doors being hidden under the canopy, we brought them out to the front. So everybody knows where the front of the school is now. Gymnasium, we painted gym walls also, removed again the plastic floor tiles and installed in the resilient flooring. This, which is a spongy, kind of a spongy floor. When you walk on it, it protect, or run on it and play basketball, and it protects your knees. We are waiting for, to paint the logo in that floor. They wanted to do their, all their assemblies and everything before, at the beginning of school, and then we're going to go back in there and paint that logo on the floor. paint that logo on the floor. They also have ordered new wall pads. We're waiting on, waiting on right now. But this is what that gym floor looks like. So it looks, looks really nice too. The breezeway there, we're, we're demolishing a portion of the breezeway. They've installed the plumbing. They poured some concrete, poured the concrete foundations into flooring. We did have to take the, take the, the windows out of the library there. So when we did that, it affected the carpet. So the carpet was too short, and then we had to remove some bookcases and replace some bookcases. So because of having to remove the, the windows out of the library, we had to do some more work in the media center. That was kind of a domino effect there from doing the breezeway. So York Elementary School, we had a parking lot expansion. They, we removed, the contractors removed all three double-wide modular classrooms that were out there. We've installed an underground stormwater system. It paved the entire parking lot and installed new LED lighting there. So this is what it looks like if you're standing on top of the gym, which is where I was at, and looking towards Siege Lane. This is what the parking lot looks like there. And if you turn around and face the other way, you can see the parking lot facing towards the back where the modular classrooms were at before. So they have 96 new parking spots in that parking lot. So hopefully it's going to alleviate some of the parking problems at that school, and then they can queue their parent drop-off line through this parking lot here, and hopefully it'll get some of that traffic off of Siege Lane. York High School Learning Commons, we, the contractor's been working there, installing concrete, installing electrical and conduits underneath the floors. They've been framing up walls. They started ductwork installation. And they also, over the weekend, they began to install drywall in there and insulation in the walls. So substantial completion there is October 11th. They are trying to beat that date. This is what the architect's rendering was of the, of the Learning Commons, and this is what it looks like right now. So they're getting there. The last project I was going to talk about was Tab Middle School. This is a roof replacement there. They have replaced 95% of all the roof, have installed 95% of all the metal roof panels. They're in the process of working on metal trim panels, metal panel, metal, vertical metal panels and trim work and doing some downspouts. So their substantial completion is August 30th, and so they're very, very close to that date. And then the final completion is September 30th. And in between the substantial completion and final is going to, they'll finish up the trim work and downspouts and things like that. This is what the gymnasium roof, I mean, this is what the metal roof looks like over the library. This is that big, long piece of green there. That's the library there. And then this is here is around the courtyard, which last year I showed you was partially finished. Now it's finished, completely finished this year. And now Dr. Carol has a few comments to make at this point in time.
Thank you, Mark. So board members, I want to brief you on a recent issue that we're working through at Tab Middle. Last week at the tail end of the above classroom roof, working, as you can see, most of those panels are done, a couple of staff members reported to their, that their rooms, that there was a concern in the 300 wing. Our staff inspected those rooms and then others in the wing and found the presence of mold in the ceiling drywall above the suspended ceiling. So I want to be clear, if you're sitting a room, there's nothing visible. Where we're having the problem is you have the roof itself, a roofing deck below that. Then you usually have an empty space till you get to the suspended ceiling with some insulation in between. What we're dealing with is in this wing of this building, and we don't have that anywhere else, we have a horizontal drywall ceiling that's in between the roof decking and that suspended ceiling, about three feet above the suspended ceiling. Now, we've received intermittent reports in the past of leaks in that area, and we've pursued them, but this was the first time we've ever seen any signs of mold. And these intermittent reports were the driving force in moving this roofing project forward into the CIP project, scheduled projects. We were able to get a contractor into the building Friday morning who gave us the scope of it and inspected the whole wing, gave us a price and a timeline for completion in the evening of Friday. And they've actually started that work today, dropping ceiling grids where necessary and starting the demolition work on some of this drywall. Additionally, as a precaution, we had a third party do air testing in random sections of the entire building today, and we'll have those results tomorrow. And they will be communicated out as part of our communication strategy that's starting tonight. In that, tonight, it's starting with informing you. And in the last hour, a Connect Five message has gone out to the parents and stakeholders at Tab Middle. This work is planned for completion no later than Sunday, September 1st. It's very straight, straight work, direct work to do, just removing the, the drywall panels and then any affected ceiling tiles. And then staff will be following, our staff will be following up, cleaning in those rooms. And then as those rooms are completed, we'll bring that third-party air testing vendor in to retest, and then we'll communicate those results out. But we don't foresee any problems in getting this done on time and to be successful. Do you have any questions?
I just have a comment, and I think this is just to bring a point home to the listeners and folks that see us spend a lot of energy and time and money into capital improvement things and how we put improvements on a calendar or on a timeline or such. Because in some areas across the country where things get left longer without replacement or, you know, a scheduled event, that's, I mean, this is an example of that could have been up there for much longer than what we're seeing it being taken care of now. So I think the way that you as staff and this board and the decisions and the county support we have for funding to do our capital programs, these things are very far and few between. And when we find them, we find them purposeful and fix them and, you know, because things are going to happen. But this brings to life the importance of having a good, strong capital improvement program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Medford. That's a great point. And that's also why annually we look at every building, put eyes on every building to see if there's an issue that needs to move up in the schedule.
And Dr. Carol, I'd like to echo Mark's comments on that, but it sounds like too that yourself or your staff, at least, everyone's on top of things with us, and we appreciate that.
They're trying to be as aggressive as possible.
Appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
One last thing I was going to mention too is, Mr. Sheerhart, I was, I had an opportunity to go around with Dr. Shandor last week to a lot of these construction projects. And it seems like we do have a lot of them, but I know we've streamlined the process that we had some issues with by bringing everybody to the table, and that's worked really, really well. It's worked so well, we had a lot of projects this year. But, and they're all coming along phenomenally. When you look at the gym floors at those gymnasiums, you'd think you were walking into a brand-new gym. I mean, brand-new, like it was just built. But the work being done is great. It's being done efficiently and fast, and it seems like it's good quality work too, when you, everything that I've seen. So, but thank you for all your work on that too. Thank you. All right. So next, we have public participation at board meetings, and the school board provides public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. And speakers will present their comments from the podium, and they may speak to up to three minutes. And we have one person signed up this evening to speak, and it's Melissa Wade. If you could just state your name and address when you come forward.
Hello, my name is Melissa Wade. I live at 111 Hen Lane, Seaford, Virginia, 23696. Thank you, school board members, Dr. Shandor and senior staff. I'm Melissa Wade, President of the York Education Association. Last week, I took the time and visited every school in the division, meeting with principals and, when available, and leaving anonymous surprises in mailboxes. These visits were in conjunction with a very busy beginning of the school year. YEAA participated in the vendor fair hosted by the York County School Division and also provided lunch to new teachers and the HR department. Teachers ate baked and fried chicken, sides, salad, fresh cooked watermelon that I cut for a long time, and cookies. They also played Jeopardy, learning important facts about the York County School Division, including school mascots, colors, and important phone numbers to call. We were, they were also able to choose free items from our retired teacher donation table. The YEAA are happy to be partners with the York County School Division and look forward to a great year. We would also like to wish all the educators, including parents, bus drivers, custodians, secretaries and teachers, a successful year. Please remember to wear red for Ed on Wednesdays and to show your support for public education. And Carol is going to hand out some of these nifty bracelets in case you don't have a red tie. That says red for Ed for stand for public education. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you and have a good night.
All right. Thank you so much. So next, we're going to move into matters by board members, and I'm going to start with you, Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay. I had a couple of opportunities this summer to do some things to help me as a new board member. Back in July, Mr. Richardson and Dr. Shandor and I went up to Richmond for a VSBA, like a new board member orientation, where I just learned a little bit more how the school board works and reporting to the state organization, the Virginia School Board Association. And I got a lot of insight for, for how, what we can do to best impact the students in the classroom and working with the school administration and with various civic organizations as well. And so I really enjoyed that time this summer. And I also enjoyed being able to just walk around over the summer and always walking past Coventry Elementary School. The building looks fantastic as it's almost completed, the new roof, the entryway, and I'm excited about the security vestibule in there is providing more safety for all the teachers and students inside the classroom and everything. I also got to, I went and visited all of the high schools in the last couple of weeks during their marching band camp, just to see them at work in the, the heat and the humidity and stuff like that. And Grafton was at St. Luke's United Methodist Church for their band camp because they couldn't use the facilities there at Grafton as the AC was being overhauled. But all the high schools, the, the students working so diligently together to prepare their, their marching band shows, and it's not just for football games. They all do competitions and stuff like that too. So I encourage, you know, board members and all teachers and anyone in the community to go out and support those students as well in the marching bands. Coventry, again, getting a new counselor and an ACI to help service those students there. I'm really excited about those. And a new principal, Brian Fries. I've actually met him before in Newport News, and he's going to be fantastic for that community. The last thing I do want to say is I sort of want to give a charge to all of the teachers in York County. And at this time of year, it's really easy to get locked into working on this lesson and the syllabus here, preparing your classroom so it looks like it could go on like HGTV and stuff like that. But you're not just preparing those things. You're, everyone in that building is preparing to make an impact on the students that are coming in your classroom. And I just want you to focus on that impact that you're going to make in everything you do. It's, it's how long of an impact, what kind of an impact, and how deep of an impact you're going to make into that community is based on the things you're doing right now and setting up for the first couple of weeks of school. So I just charge all those teachers now to think about the impact more than the individual paperwork and lessons you've got in front of you. Thank you. Good luck this school year.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Mr. Medford?
What he said. Welcome back, everybody. It's going to be a great 2019, 2020 school year. I really have nothing else to say yet, but I know that there are a lot of hard work and professional development and, you know, new teacher orientation, just the, the folks, the leadership we saw introduced today. It's going to be an exciting school year. A lot of new faces, which is just, it's crazy when you think about it, but we're a large district when you think about it too. So everybody's going to do a great job. Great job.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Medford. Dr. George?
Don't have much to add. I'll just echo Brett's comments. This is always my favorite time of year because there's excitement in the air, you know? It's, it's fresh, it's, it's renewed. Everybody's anxious and gung-ho to get in there and, and start. So just seize that and hold on to that. And, you know, you get a little further down the road and you're going to probably need to think back on how excited you were now and how refreshing things were and find ways to make that happen. So we're, but we're really excited to have everybody back in this, this new group of folks. It's always very exciting. So I hope I can make my rounds and get to know them some.
Good. Thank you, Dr. George. So I had a productive summer. I did a few, few things. There was a video that I helped out with, with making for the Youth Family Summit that was on being a good citizen. So I did that for Chiquita Seaborn there at the school board office and had fun doing that. And I'm getting ready to do another video for them for this Wybrook and Exchange Program. And I'm excited about that because my daughter participated in that program, and she's actually going to participate in the video to tell from a student perspective as well about that program to try to help get more students involved in applying for the, for the new program that we're going to start back this year. So I'm excited about that. So I did attend the VSBA, new board member orientation with our newest board member and Dr. Shandor back in July. I also visited some of the schools that were under construction last week, and I got to see that already. But it's just, it's, it's just amazing to see the work that's being done on our infrastructure. That it's, 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 it's great. It's good work. But also attended the Summer Leadership Academy, and our new leaders in our school division were all there, and it was great to see them learning and engaging. And also visited and was able to attend the new student, our new teacher orientation at Tab High School. And we have a lot of bright and upcoming new teachers that just got hired, some from other divisions, but some brand-new. They're just out of college, so it was great to meet them and, and talk to them as well. So that's all I have for that. So we're going to move on to financial matters. And Mr. Higginbotham, you have financial matters this evening?
I do, yes. We have claimed certified for payment for the months of June and July for 2019. The significant expenditures for June were instructional-related expenditures totaling $554,000, and it included payments to Pearson Education for textbooks, that was $370,000. New Horizons for $54,800 for tuition. Gibson Consulting for $51,700 for the special education program evaluation. We had technology-related payments that totaled approximately $1.7 million, and it included payments to CDW for $339,800 for the Microsoft licensing agreements. Also to CDW was $525,000 for network servers and Chromebooks and the electronic systems, or two electronic systems for $741,000 for new network switches. We also had payments to SEDEXO totaling $406,000 for May and June food service operations. And payments related to the construction and maintenance projects totaled $2.8 million for the capital projects. And we just heard about all those different ones, but Grafton Complex, Tab Elementary, Tab Middle, Dare, Coventry and Mount Vernon Elementary Schools as well. Payments related to transportation totaled $367,000, and that was to purchase four new school buses. And we can move to July now. And the significant expenditures for July, we had payments related for instructions of, for instruction approximately $30,000, and it included the payments to the International Baccalaureate for $11,650 for annual membership, Frontline Technologies for $18,625 for the Teacher Lead Management and Substitute Finder System. Payments related to IT were $142,000. Kronos was $121,000 for the renewal of the employee management system, and Tyler Technologies for $18,600 for the transportation management system. Related to administration, we had payments of $352,000, and that included the Virginia Risk Sharing Association, which was formerly VML for liability, property and automobile insurance. The payments for construction and maintenance projects totaled $168,000, included the payments for the ACES for the work at the Grafton Complex. For the significant changes relating to the operating budget, if you look back from last year to this year, the federal revenue for July 2019 is up by more than $900,000 from 2018. This is due to the fact that the first transfer of Impact Aid revenue was received earlier than anticipated. And the expenditures and encumbrances are about $3.8 million higher in 2019 than in 2018. And that's due to the fact that in July of 2018, the county and school division implemented a new financial system, which caused the delay in some normal processing of expenditures and purchase orders. Some encumbrances for food service operations were about $400,000 higher in 2019 than 2018. And again, it's due to the implementation of the new financial system, which caused a delay in the normal processing. Resolution 1950 requires the school board approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and we have about 10 items on that resolution. Six requisitions related to the capital projects going across the division. Two requisitions are for the tuition to the New Horizons Regional Education Center for YCSD students to attend the Governor's School and the Career and Technical Education Programs. There's a requisition for To Teach, which provides professional development throughout the year, and one requisition for Tyson Foods for food service supplies. And so if there aren't any questions, I make a motion- And so if there aren't any questions, I make a motion to accept the financial reports as listed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And if there's no other questions, Ms. Gray?
A motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Dr. George, and the, to approve financial matters, the motion passed four to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. So next, we're going to move on to the consent calendar, and is there anything that needs to be pulled from the consent calendar by members? Okay, so the consent calendar is going to be approval of personnel actions, approval of donations totaling $6,750, approval of the York River Academy Alternative Accreditation Plan, and the approval of a resolution declaring the intention to reimburse the school division from the proceeds of one or more grants made by the Commonwealth of Virginia for certain expenditures made. And the next one is the approval of fiscal year 2021 proposed budget calendar, and then we have the approval of the minutes of a regular meeting for May twentieth, and special meetings on May twenty-eighth, June third, June tenth, June fourteenth, June twentieth, and July first of 2019, and the approval to upgrade, or regrade, the program analyst position, and the approval of the reclassification of the transportation area supervisory position from exempt to non-exempt status. So is anyone that would like to make a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Gray?
You did, Mr.?
Mr. Medford made the motion.
And seconded by, by Dr. George?
Mr. Higginbotham.
I couldn't hear you guys, I wasn't sure.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Here we are.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve the consent calendar, the motion passed four to zero, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next, we have action items, which we have none listed, no policy discussions, no policy first-reading discussions, and no policy second readings, and so the last thing we have on our agenda is report of the superintendent, so Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. So I have a number of items that I'll get through this evening. So first, I wanted to share, you mentioned a little bit about the teacher, the Leadership Academies that we had, we also had a teacher leader summer academy, where we had over eighty teachers attend this year, this is the second one that we've had, we had Charlie Coleman from Solution Tree, he provided professional development on strengthening our school-based professional learning communities, and that of those folks, sixty-five of those teachers will continue to participate through our teacher leader cohort throughout this school year that Ms. Head will be leading. Also, the Leadership Academy that you mentioned, we had over one hundred and forty-five leaders at the Leadership Academy, I appreciate the board showing up and support, we had principals, assistant principals, testing coordinators, and two teacher leaders from every school, along with our central office staff there. We also had the Transportation Academy, that was held on August twentieth and twenty-first at Bruton High School, we had approximately one hundred and fifty employees attend the transportation, safety, and safe schools training. On August twenty-second, we facilitated the first of three days of the YCSD division-wide professional development training, that was provided by our instructional department. We also had new teacher orientation, Mr. Richardson, that you mentioned, we had one hundred and fifteen new teachers this year, that hopefully this year, you'll have the opportunity to get in the schools and observe and to meet several of those new folks. Finally, we had another job fair this summer, we had the job fair at TAB High School for our nonlicensed group, the purpose was to recruit and interview candidates for custodial transportation and nonlicensed instructional openings, the fair was advertised on WTKR and the Virginia Employment Commission websites, as well as social media, we had nearly fifty candidates attend that event. Last, but certainly not least, I want to thank our custodial staff, as you heard Mr. Shearheart this evening share all the work that was done in a number of our schools, it takes a lot of dedicated people to help put the pieces back together, so we appreciate Mr. Dolak's staff, as they'll be working to the last minute to get a number of our schools shined up and ready to go for our kids. Their dedication and attention to detail is, is so appreciated. And then in seven days, we welcome back returning over thirteen thousand kids, so here we go again, we're looking forward to a great school year, and this concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. So we'll see everyone back on September ninth at six PM for our next work session, but as a reminder, our next regular meeting, the regular meeting here, will be September twenty-third at seven PM, and we're looking forward to a fantastic school year. So we're now in need of a closed session to discuss a personnel matter, so is there a board member that would like to make a motion to take us into closed session for that?
Yeah, move the York County School Board meeting closed session to pursuant to Virginia Section 2.2-3711A of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act to discuss personnel matters.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gray? Yeah, she may have to call it.
You'll have to vote, yes.
You may have to do a roll call, because...
I unintentionally logged out, so...
That's okay. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Medford, I don't have you in either.
Yes.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Medford and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to move into closed session, the vote passed four to zero.
All right, thank you, we're now in closed session, thank you.